But okay, let's get going. Dude, Divatashi, by the way, big flex in the D3. 25 months, man, that's crazy dude. Holy macaroni. Thank you, man, welcome back. Oh, this guy got dusted. Yeah, this guy got plastered. Charged him. Shattered the thing. Or I wouldn't have shattered it, reflecting the coil. Protected myself. Blasted. And cuddly with the 124, holy crap, big flex for you cuddly, good to see you, man. What's up, dude? What's up, what's up? Gotta try to get warmed up here for other man. Don't want to scoop this guy out of the way somewhere. Gotta get warmed up, dude. Thank you, man, welcome back. The insane sub tenor and the insane insane power to go along with it that you've shown us over the years. Thank you, man. Uh, you're you're usually gonna be in battle stance, yeah. Battle stance is where you wanna mostly hang out if you're doing damage. Defensive stance is kinda like a whoa, we're about to take a lot of damage, hop in D stance. Or if you're like really gonna die, but yeah, you don't usually wanna be in D stance, but it's it's still good to bind it and make use of it, right? So that's good. Those two massive subs too, man. Massive subs. Thanks, guys. Been helping us get this thing started. Yeah, I wanna do some arms and sholes. Or no, sorry, some chest. Arms always warm up, chest and back for the day. Although we did enjoy some outside workouts over the weekend. Which is fun. Getting some sun. I think we'll work out chest and back a little bit today and then maybe try to get some leggies in tomorrow. This is my character, me? This is just from another night. I think, was this from Thursday night? Maybe it's from Thursday night. We like to do a little bit of VOD review. Yep. Did a WoW PvP study in the morning. You know? Studying up, seeing if we can make any improvements while we're working out, just for fun. Old Jim Tesh also put a watch, yeah.
Okay.
We'll keep that in mind. I agree. But we're here doing our thing, right? We're here getting our gains on. I guess I could make my cam a little bit bigger too. That that's at the expense of seeing my health a little bit, but... Whatever. Who needs to see the health anyway, right? We'll figure it out. Either we're full or we're dead. Or you can see me in the raid frames too, right? Maybe I will. I think that amount... Of cam is fine, but you know, let me let me experiment with it. I think it's kinda fun, we can just hop and do some WoW stuff early on. Hope we did. Pumping up a little bit more, huh? Yeah. Whoa. Going crazy now. Going crazy with the cam now. Here, just just for you, bud. There we go, big W. Huge dub. Big gains. We did it. Yeah, we got all kinds of WoW PvP to review. This one right here was a 9v10 game. Not a real high rated RPG, but still. We were we were a little bit outnumbered, but not outmatched. Not out muscled. You know what I mean? Still getting it done. But yeah, I wanted to chest and back today. Wouldn't mind chucking in a little bit of uh... Hex bar stuff though. To get them leggies warmed up at least, but we'll see. Regardless, we got a day of games and gains ahead of us. We may have to at some point do this classic hardcore thing. It might be a little bit too uh... Too hyped to pass up, but... Uh, I'm still having a lot of fun with POE, so I wanna do that. We'll see. We'll see. I think we've still got a little bit more POE to do. Yeah, the classic hardcore, man. People ask me about that like 20 times a day, so... We have to do it at some point, we'll see. We'll see. How good it is? Isn't that fun? Isn't that cool? I love it. Very grateful for it, right? Yeah, Legion is my uh... Supplement sponsor. They're wonderful. Got the Legion Pulse Recharge combo flowing right now, as a matter of fact. They list their recharge as a post-workout supplement, but I I still like to use it with the pre-workout. Just feels good. Tastes good too. Now getting that son of a week has been nice. Nice. I haven't played a lot of Rip Paladin, but playing with Vanguard's is insane. He's a beast. I gotta get some more session with him, man. Don't wanna play too long. Have lots of hardcore, yeah, that's funny. That's funny. People are liking it, you know? People are liking it. And... Just might be missing out on too much by like... Not playing it, but yeah, I wanna play some more POE first, things first, right? Yeah. Thanks, Clockwork. Thanks, dude. Gotta make sure it here doesn't get too crazy, but not yet. Yeah, the just the whole classic hardcore thing is really pumping. I mean, it it's it's one of those things where it's kinda like the a casual thing to do despite it being hardcore. But people like that in WoW, man. And and big community events like that are fun, like Project 60 was really fun too. Training today, a little bit chest and back, little kinda wake-up refreshment from the weekend and then try to get some leggies in tomorrow. Yep. Yeah, POE's great. Always fun. The new league isn't real like... Doesn't really shake up the gameplay a ton, but it's always fun to play, you know? Always fun to play POE, so... We'll do at least a little bit more of that, right? Yeah, it's pretty cool, huh, Rev? Pretty cool. We're gonna... I kinda wanna play more POE, more than I wanna play classic hardcore, but... Let's see how it goes. Always kinda... It's tricky, but I like the challenge of kind of building in a in a new environment, right? In a new section, it's fun. But I think classic might be the the biggest sort of effort multiplier, right? Like you might do classic and that's like the best thing that you can do, but we'll see. POE is where the passion's at right now. Just cause it's fun and... The streams are pretty cool with it. We'll see how it goes. We'll see how it goes. Once again, building up our action RPG audience for our... Our D4 pumps. Coming soon! Coming soon! Less than two months now, huh? Pretty crazy. Less than two months to go. What build did you settle in on, Rev? Maybe you already told me. I think you said you swapped over to Juggernaut, right? Season 2 Dragonfly 1, too? Yep, yep. Yep. It is Rev, but it's still fun. It is. But essentially, uh, like subs and whatnot are usually lower than when I play WoW and whatnot, but... When you look at the total viewership for the stream, like back in the past broadcast, it's actually not too far off, which is interesting. Or I should go, oh yeah, oh yeah. That's a juicy one right there. So it's interesting. It's interesting. That 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 suggests to me that there's a lot of new people who swing by and at least check in, you know, or people just in general, just checking to see what we're up to. That's cool, I guess. We'll be studying just good old PvP, bro. Ways to make improvements with our gameplay situations to look out for. Yeah, Fox did a very comprehensive job with RF for the homies, right? Sup, Ginger? Warming up, bro. Warming up for the day. It's starting to get springtime out here in California, man, I love it. I love it. I need it. It's transformative to my energy. So good. I spend a lot of time outside now. At least I will be there, dude. Great. We get to play outside for a couple hours after dinner too. It's lovely. Yep. Season 2 Dragonfly behind, we're gonna try to pick up a quick... Pick up a quick ladder title. Before Diablo. But I wanna try to get rank 1 this uh, this season 2, just gotta wait until Vanguard's gives us the go, you know? Till he's ready to queue up. But we're we're alive! Get live, son. Yeah, Vonish Shadow's been going pretty good. My my character has a couple little weird things about him, that's... That's how POE goes, is there's all these little weird... Problems you gotta solve along the way. Not uncommon. Extremely common to have those little... Those little puzzles you gotta solve along the way. Right? Right how it normally is. But we'll get to working on it today a little bit, see how it goes. If we can, I think we should. Should be able to. Which weak aura are you looking for? Guess we've got a couple. Which one you need? Ten part killer. Oh yeah, it's nice and warm here today. Oh yeah! Not real hot yet, but nice and warm. Very nice. Yeah, we got we got a couple weak auras cooking. Most of the time. Which one you want? Wouldn't mind doing a couple of these. Just to get the feeling right. Get warmed up. Just a little bit of warming up. Yeah, which weak aura? There's lots of them. This is a 9v10 RPG right here, boys. Tricky. Had to hang in there. Mostly wanna bench anything. What song is this from, or is this a new one? I did a bunch of push-ups over the weekend, so I can kinda feel that. Cam. I haven't did much of pull-ups on rings and stuff, so kinda actually funny we're doing back in chest today, but I wanna do some weights first. Sup, Wacha? What's up? Do some weights first. Man, oh man. Yeah, we got a lot of RPGs on YouTube, practice a little bit. We've been doing a lot of it during the daytime. Sup, sup? Still more than time for me. I generally just use the rope, but I think it is better to use a single with the strap. Um, but it's up to you. I still probably just use the rope more than anything. But if you're looking for the peak best contraction possible, probably better to just do a single arm. Yeah, for me, it's like, yeah, maybe. Maybe it's better peak perfect activation, but I'd rather just do the rope. That's that's probably what I think, yeah. What's got you thinking that? Oh, what's up? Very kind, buttering me up. I appreciate it. Buttering me up. And what's got you thinking? On the trisup activation. And that thing takes off like a... Like not, I don't think I have trigger finger, that's what was going on there. Gotta watch out for that. Oh, this this little video is funny. That's like three 1v2, 1v1s in a row. Yo, Resion, thank you so much, man. Big flex of two months, dude. I can charm Boom Boom, I haven't played a lot of Wrath, but I can try. I I have not been keeping up with Wrath at all. So keep that in mind. But yeah. Keep that in mind. Thank you so much, Resion. Welcome back, man. Uh huh, yeah. You can do that with a weak aura. Boom Boom, yeah. I believe you can do that with a weak aura. So I would just go to like, go to Google and type in like overpower weak aura or revenge weak aura. And you should be able to find one. Or maybe even go to YouTube to make sure that like you can find the the video for the person who has it. And it does what you want it to do, but yes, I have that. And I'm pretty sure I just found it off of a YouTube video. And got the weak aura, but yeah, so you're gonna need the weak aura add-on. Yeah. Taking out these hunters, bro, we're taking them out. Take them out. One down, baby, one down. Go back to your warrior's gear, good. Good. I like that, but yeah, that's what I would say, just get that... Check out the the weak aura for it. And then you can do that, yeah. You can. It's nice. It's nice. Cause like you're saying, it doesn't show in the stance if you're not in stance, right? It won't show overpower if you're in battle. Or if you're not in battle. This game was hilarious. We fucked up three traps that game. That's really funny. I imagine I'm just freaking out. Freaking out! Yeah, watch this one. This is funny. Freaking out, dude. Pumping. Yeah, he does have cool translog, yeah. Yeah. He does. Yo! Flex, big flex for you, man. Thank you, dude, for the prime, bro. Let's go. Getting fired up this morning, appreciate it, guys. Pumping them up, almost five in the day already, love that. Love that. Getting it going. Good to put energy in and get that energy out, that's right. That's right. Alright. That's a fresh flex, yeah. Yep, mid-workout, getting warmed up, yep. Yep. In the pump. The pumped flex. Yeah, we reflected three traps this game, including one right there at the end. This guy's freaking out, man. What is this creature? What is he fighting? Don't worry about it, bro. Just accept it. Accept your fate. Yep, trying to make a good day out of it today, boys. Trying to get this thing going, you know? Try to pump it up a little bit. Maybe get some POE during the day, maybe a little bit of WoW during the nighttime. Might be just what we're looking for, boys. Might be just what we need. Like I said, we can always start trying out hardcore classic during the day, but... I'm not like this way yet. Unfinished business in POE, we're not quite there yet. That's how it goes, bros. Alright. Usually like two hours a day. Around there. Not usually much more than that just due to the schedule, but um... Sometimes less. But I'd say around that. Then we do our walks during the the streams as well, which is fun, so... A good amount of activity during the day. Whoa, now! Mister Woody! Thanks for that Prime, bro. Hit you with some... Some double raise action, some lateral raise action. Thank you, bro! For the Prime! We'll take good care of it, man. Thank you for investing it here. And trusting it to me. We'll take good care of it, man. Make it worth your while. Keeping the content pumping and the games and gains, man. That's the plan, dude. But thank you, man. Far too kind. So this one, spoiler alert, also ended up in a 1v1. Let's see how it goes, huh? Spoiler alert. Did indeed... Come down to the wire a little bit. You guys might enjoy it. May enjoy seeing how it went. That Warrior got some good cleave on us though, he did. He sure really did. I gotta be killing these totems though, right here. I was looking a little bit grim for us, but I gotta be killing them totems. Can't be just letting them sit. Killing healing tide, killing healing streams is a big deal, guys. It denies a lot of healing from Resto Shaman's right now. You're gonna wanna do that. Yeah, I like to have a good amount of activity in my day. Makes me happy. Makes me feel good. The walk-in in combination with the lifting in the mornings. So you lift in the morning and then the walk is like, uh... It's kinda just keeping it rolling for the rest of the day, you know? Little... Little pick-me-up. You know, it's nice. Kinda heals me. Them subs are also a nice little pick-me-ups. Like once you have that Prime, put us at five in the day already, halfway to 10 in the morning, let's go, dudes! Let's go! Great start. Great start to the week. It is a new week, isn't it? So fresh. Full of possibilities and potential for gains. Keep it going now. Quick pull-ups, dude. Good for buns. Basically, almost works. Oh, man. Have Monday indeed. We did a little more streaming over the weekend than we usually do because of the schedule change. Kind of worked out outside during the day, and then you have to walk in the afternoon, which just worked out fine, yeah. Well, did it if we can. If the schedule allows for it, yeah, it's fun. Oh, yeah, here we go. Alright. Gotta get warmed up on the bench a little bit and see where we're at, huh? Have some fun. There we go. Probably 25. Run up bad. I can enjoy the pump of a lower weight first. Definitely can enjoy that. Get it pumping. Pumping the pumps for arms. The arms pump, this is my little horny warrior. He pumps, too. As a matter of fact... Big Bagira's... Pumping, oh! I wonder why that is? His, his stats look pretty nice. Doesn't have sockets and stuff, but... He's a pumper man. Maybe it's an extra strength from the free action trinket, I don't know. I don't know what his deal is. He's hammering people. He just does. Schmammers them. I like the secondary stats for the human warrior, too, but... Yeah, I don't know. He just gets it done. Dispel that curse off of me, please. Get this thing off me so I can crit. No, crit's very sad for arms warrior. But that lock will just keep it on you all the time. Not cool. Yeah, what do you guys got going on Monday morning? Anything cool for the week? For Resto, it's just like, I think some POE and... Hopefully some WoW PvP in the evenings, maybe, and uh... Maybe even some hardcore classic if we're feeling... Especially zesty. And adventurous and... Wanted to hop on the hype wave. Nothing wrong with that, but haven't done it yet. Not yet. Big school papers, hey, man, you gotta do that. That's important stuff. You got this, man. Work as a VOD, no, the uh, the gaming is the VOD. Yeah, the gaming is the VOD. Started a new job Thursday, started gaming every day until then, okay. That's exciting, congrats on the new gig. Is that like a step up for you? Oh, man. Good. New sub here, loving YouTube content, so I'll jump over, thank you, man, yeah, we're here like every day, so... We'll keep the YouTube content rolling for you, of course, but... Yeah, Twitch is like our, I would say like our main platform in terms of the time that we're investing in it. Right? We're here a lot, so... Welcome, man, thanks for watching on YouTube as well, though, dude. Definitely appreciate you investing the sub, too, man. You rock, dude. We'll take good care of it, man. We'll take good care of it. More, multiple videos a day on YouTube across all of our channels and whatnot, the shorts and the normal vids, and of course, nice streams. On the weekdays and a little bonus streams on the weekends. That's how we do it. Try to keep it in balance, but... You know, I love doing this, so... We get to pump it, and the support, you guys... Helps make that possible for the very long haul, which so far, so good, right? That's the plan. Yeah, we even do like the morning, like WoW PvP studies. Just checking out some of the gameplay and... See if there's any room for improvement. What's a good alternative for underhand bent barbell row?
For uh, alternative for what?
What are you trying to train? What are you trying to avoid? Looking for. What do you wanna do, what do you wanna not do? Get an alternative. Because you got tons of what you're trying to accomplish and what you're trying to avoid, right? With the underhand bent or barbell row. Nice little pumper set. Hey, we can get some weight moving, too. Get a couple more sets in. Could get some weight moving. I kind of from my past workouts, we would need to be moving fairly considerable weight for fives. Keep warming up. See where we're at, huh? Yeah, that dragon is sick. This, this, this season's glad mount is awesome. It might not be as far away as you think, though, man. Keep putting the reps. Keep putting the reps. Might not be as far as you think, that far off as you think. But yeah, the rating is a little bit compressed right now, so... Be tricky sometimes to get it. When rating's a little more inflated, it's a little bit easier to get up to that 2400 mark, right? Not super inflated this season so far. With the popularity of solo shuffle and whatnot, right? Potentially not as many people playing structured arenas as sometimes. Get a little bit more warmed up and then... Get some benching. Maybe some five-by-fives, perhaps. But yeah, we got that glad mount, and then we'll be trying to get the, the Season 2 glad mount pretty quick so that we can focus up on Diablo when it comes out, right? Yep. Yeah, you know, I don't love solo shuffle either, man. Not gonna lie. I think it's probably good for the game overall, I, I, I could understand that argument, but... I know the new structured arenas, it feels a lot different. Right? Solo shuffle could be fun, too. It can be fun, but those long queues, man. That puts a, that puts a damper on the lock. Do you ever practice? Yeah. Like situational awareness and stuff. Do PvP for the beginning and do PvP in the middle, that sounds fine. Sounds fine. Start to like PvP, yeah! PvP's the best. WoW PvP is very special. Just in terms of all PvP games ever, WoW PvP is the best, in my opinion. Yeah, man. Get in there. The cable setup is from Legend Fitness. No, not sponsored by them or anything, that's just... That's just where it came from. Having an open gym equipped with sponsors would be sick, though, so we could get you guys to get discounts, though? That'd be awesome. That's not crap, though. Ain't got that going yet. Someday. But we have to get more space and new equipment, so that'd be kind of crazy. Some pumper's. Pumper sets. Got the rack, cable setup, leg throw, yep, and dumbbells. Pretty wild, huh? Yeah. Pretty wild. But me, like... This is me, man. This is me, this is what I do, I love it, you know, so... This is a dream come true. Yep. Literally, yeah. Yeah, we waited till we had our own house, too, right? Didn't want to put this in there, let the rental to have to move it. Exactly. Yep. This is me, man. I'm that dude who would just put a whole unit in his garage. They'll use it every day. Thanks, Warblade. You probably have like a voice, a text translator, but... There you go. Prevent ork now, that's my third character. Yeah. I mean, I, I like the gym environment just fine, but it's just having a gym at home has always been a dream come true, right? Something we always, always wanted. Right? Yep. Yeah, he's freaking out, man. Reflected three traps that game, huh? Yeah. That's badass, Zinran. What's up, Akuma, how you feeling today, man? How you feeling today? On the bin? I hope. 45 is a fun weight to bench, we're gonna go a little bit more, too. That's good, Akuma, that's good, man. Yep, ease back in, dude, ease back in. That's right. Do any hit, I don't know, not really. That'd be a fine way to do it, though, wouldn't it? A little cardio. A little resistance training. Probably a fun way to do it. Not right now, I just lift weights and do some walking. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind like running, it's just, I can both lift weights and walk while I'm screaming. So that's probably most efficient for work, right? Yeah, I mean... There's other stuff that would be fun, too, right? So... Right? Ooh, yeah, maybe. Hopefully it comes back quick, or all that. Do it fast enough, quick. What's up, DJ, how you doing, what's up, man? What's up, what's up? Back at it again, bro. Another day. Of games and games. Starting it now. Back at it again, dude. Alright. Oh, snap! Getting up, you're getting on location, huh? Is that what's going on? Getting a little closer? To the, to the campus? Awesome. Is that how that works? Or are you moving further away? Okay, getting closer, yeah. Nice. Yeah, it's always real nice to get up there and visit. Super nice area and beautiful drive up. Big part of it, yeah. Once I get out there, alright now. That'd be fun. Rebuild that culture. And you're the big flex of the full year, man, oh my goodness. No! That sucks, man, what happened? That knee has not sounded too happy, thanks. For the full year, I am happy and grateful for that support and bump for your red dragon status ascension, but that does suck, that hit me, man. Hate that. What happened? Feel good. Feel good. Big reps. Big reps. Yeah, that could do it. That could do it, dang it. Bummer. Well, hopefully he heals up quick. Ready to need surgery for that? That does sound kind of like surgery territory, doesn't it? A meniscus tear? That doesn't go back on its own, does it? Yeah. We'll see, huh? Alrighty. Here we go, boys. Kind of a pumping gym stream so far today, huh? Super set, super set, yeah, just... Like, you know, like you're kind of... Thinking might be nice, as I got the whole gym to myself, right? This whole big ol', this whole big ol' playground is all mine. This whole big ol', this whole big ol' playground is all mine. Had to grab onto some weights and do some sets while we're resting from our last set. Maybe we're spread out the pump a little too much, but nah. Fun if you're working, bro. Think about it. Think about it. Oh my goodness. Uh, yeah, we're in between LA and San Diego. So, yeah. Yeah. So we've had the cool opportunity to go hang out at campus a couple times now. Really fun. I mean... Who knows? I guess I have been out of the public gym environment for a couple years now. Who knows? People are maybe already just haunting Instagram all the time. Yep. Yeah. That's right. I have the side door open. This can get a little bright. I just do my own thing, yeah. There's definitely a lot of free, like, programming on YouTube. Like Jeff Nippert, that's somebody who I would trust, yeah. I think he puts out a lot of programs. But I've also made a lot of beginner workout videos on my YouTube channel and stuff, so... Yeah. Put these on. I've done a lot of that, yeah. I don't know. I've never... We probably have indoor climbing somewhere around where we are. I haven't done a lot of that either. Yeah. Mr. Candido, yeah? Alright. Yeah. I don't think I'm, like, built for rock climbing either. And I don't especially love heights. I've done it a couple times, but yeah. Yeah. I mean, before you buy any program, you can probably find free programming online as it is, right? Like, I do all my workouts live on stream and I've made lots of videos about it as well, so... Yeah, a little lighter, leaner is good for, uh, rock climbing, I would imagine. Could be fun, but yeah. Not something I'd get into a whole lot of, but it could be fun. Yep. I think my sponsor Legion probably has training programs on the website, too, actually, now I think about it. I mostly just... Rock them subs, but yeah, I think they probably have training programs. Thanks to Major Legion to check that out. If you decide to pick anything up, you support your purchase, but yeah, I think there's a lot of free information out there, too. Man, oh, man. Feeling pretty okay. Get a little weight movement there. Yeah, I just lift weights and walk. That's my Achilles these days. It's alright, though. It's fun. Alright. This does feel nice. We can do another one, man. One more set, see how it feels. It'll feel pretty nice. Then I'm gonna get the elbow sleeves on and quit doing a bunch of other stuff in between here. Yeah, if you go to my Vagier beginner workout videos on YouTube, they're old. Right there on the main Vagier WoW channel. That'd be my, kind of, basic outline for some fun workout days. I think starting off on machines is great, personally. Machines are fun. Help you learn. They're nice. And if I went to the gym now, I'd do machines. I probably would. Yeah. This goes like... I don't have access to machines at my home setup, so if I went somewhere, that's what I'd be doing. You know? Just playing around. They're fun. Good Berserker sets on there, just go ham. I don't usually go to failure on, like, normal stuff, but you can go to failure on machines. That's fun. Using a BG bot? No, this is a bot. This is showing gameplay from prior stream where we're doing some review on it. See if there's any room for improvement. On our decision-making, on our gameplay. Maybe spotting a couple things that we can look out for in the future. Yep. Just a little bit of WoW PvP study. Yeah, a BG bot livestream with Blizzard employees just hanging out, yep. Streamer privilege, dude. He can't keep getting away with this. Fred, thanks a lot. It must've been a big flex for him. Appreciate it, dude. He can't keep getting away with it. Got a little WoW PvP study for our morning. While we're getting our pump on. Hey, we'll eventually have something like that, right? My dream? My dream is to have like an MMO? Where that's like linked up to like some kind of like... Electrical system on your body? Where like running that you do increases your character's stamina? Quickness drills increase your character's agility? Resistance training increases your character's strength stat, like that kind of thing? How cool would that be? That'd be so fun. That'd be so badass. I'd love that. I think gamifying fitness has been a concept that has been looked into. But I don't think I have, like, done enough with it, you know? It's kind of fun. Yeah, it's not a new idea, right? It's a fun thought, right? It's a fun thought, yeah. Because I did a lot of running back in high school, so I was like, this would be great if my character had like infinite stamina like this. As soon as I saw my Sims? In the Sims, go hit their little in-home bench press machine and get a little tick on their fitness meter, I was like, oh, man. I want ticks on my fitness meter, too, you know? Yeah. Uh, for actual PvP, you play armor. I mean, I'll mess around in fury, like, double DPS, low grade two or something, but you want to play armor for PvP? Alright. Got some armor on. We're gonna do one more sit here and then we'll bump it up. We got some armor on. Armored up. Armored up. Yeah, unless I'm just in playing the game with my body, more interested in building my character stats with my iron activity. But yeah, I mean, VR games are fun for that kind of thing. For sure. Here's like Gorn. Let's say that VR Vladimir game, pretty fun. VR is one thing, though. I don't really get motion sick. VR does kind of make you motion sick. Which stinks. But yeah. This is my personal view. Yeah, isn't that fun? Isn't that cool? I'm gonna do a couple here. Maybe we'll just do two... Two forty plows. Maybe we just do two forty? Or fives? I'm enjoying the pump, bro. Let's do like two thirty. For some pump. We'll do two thirty just so that we're not really doing two twenty-five. Do some pump. Oh, this is okay. Quite ready now. Out of this prize. There we go. Alright. A dream, yeah. Literally a dream come true, yep. Alright, Mr. Olivee. You have a good day, bro. We'll catch you later. Keep fighting the good fight, bro. Keep putting in work. Everybody's rooting for you, man. Let's go. And tell the team I said hi. Big fan of your work. Let's go. Here we go. Let's see if we can hit a few here, huh, boys? Let's get the weight moving now. Actually going down in weight a little bit, which is interesting, but I'm going up in reps. I feel like we should probably just do two forty-five, five by five. Quit messing around. Maybe? Bench PR is three fifty-five. We're very far off of that, though. We're not currently close to that. Hip drive, yeah, for moving as much weight as possible, yeah. That is true. Let's see. But I kind of want that to... I want it to get moving, for sure, but I also want it to sink in a little bit, you know? Sink in. Feel it. At least on this weight. Five by five plan? Maybe. Maybe. Who's that guy says all the time, hip drive? Probably just every powerlifter ever would probably say that. Every powerlifter ever. Let's say, we'll tell you to hip drive. We'll do three by six, though. And then we can go up a little bit faster. Rip toe, yep. That'd be one person who would probably talk about hip drive, for sure, yep. That'd be one of them. Almost certainly. Yeah. Almost certainly. Is it about drive? Is it about power? I don't know, man. It's about the pump. Uh, my main is Alliance, but I'm kind of actively playing three characters right now. Two of which are Alliance, my main. And then I have, you know, an Alliance alt and a Horde alt. This little guy is my Horde guy. It looks like. For me, it's about the pump, it's about the gains, baby. It's about momentum, about establishing some rhythm. Getting it going, you know? Getting it going. And then keeping it going. Here we go. Get a little leaner. Probably set six. Oh, boy. Got some reps on the menu today, huh? Nice work. Good stuff, man. Good stuff. Yeah, I think most of my benching isn't like crazy hard, but... I think it's partially because it still has some element of bodybuilding focus, but... No, it feels good to kind of get it moving. Especially as it gets heavier, you're going, whoa. Chuck it up there. Definitely. Got to get it moving. Rappalons are very strong. Very strong right now. Helping to push rank one as Rapp warrior, as a matter of fact, although they are getting another round of nerfs, but I think they'll still be good after the nerfs. What do you think? Yeah, I think they're still good, yeah. Nice arm, yeah? Mm-hmm. Yep. For sure. Are nerfs substantial? Yeah, but I think they'll still be okay, right? Yeah, I don't think the nerfs are nothing, but I think they'll still be good. Yeah. Well, Rappalons have not always been good. That's not true. They have definitely spent some times not good, even within recent memory. They got crushed by nerfs recently. Right? Yeah, you'll be fine. They'll definitely still be fine. Well, they have a lot of really good tools. And, uh, you'll be fine. Yep. Yeah, things that have a really good kit are usually pretty good. Woo! Alright. Do it again. That guy just spent the entire game trying to port me. Alrighty. Did another one. Oh, man. That was that? That felt like six went by pretty quick that time. I think it was six, though. Okay. Oogie doogie. Don't have to go too psycho with the weight here. But maybe two forty-five? For four or five? Don't want to go too nuts. I have no idea what's going on in POE. That's fine. We'll get there. Just kill everything in sight. You think you're on the right track. End game is a whole nother beast. Yeah, end game is a whole nother beast. You gotta get there. You'll see. You'll see, bro. We're doing it. We're doing it. Think you're on the right track. I think so. Yeah, just do your thing, man. Have fun with it. I'm thinking three by four, but if we can... If we do more than that, that's fine. Two forty-five, by the way. Just kind of rebuilding here. Back in the rhythm a bit. But that'll be fine. 250 could be okay, too, but I don't think we need to do that yet. We'll set 245, because first thing's first. Give her a go. Here we go. Okay. I guess five is good, too. Let me probably do 3x5. That felt fine. Not getting too weird or anything. Just getting it moving. Just getting it moving. Okay. Little extra Schultz. Thanks again for the seven subs so far today, boys. Almost 10:00 in the morning. That's a great start to the day. Hit back 10 before we hit the game and set. Yeah, we just had the battle the entire time in the middle of this game. It was fun. Just farming that buff and just crushing them. All game. Did like 28 million damage this game. That was nice. That was a big pump. Big pumper RBG right here. Oh, man. There we go. Yoink. Give me another one of them buffs right on time. Get in there, just dust them. Find somebody, just let it rip. Blam. Double sharpen, double executes. Take 'em out. Slam daddy. Hinge is a hinge, that's right. Get the hinge, bench, going today. Been working PVE, like M+ and that, but I can't vibe in PvP. Oh, really? Interesting. If this is a Warrior? I mean, all my videos are about Warrior. I have Warrior guides. I have a million, uh, you know, Warrior PvP gameplay vids. Yeah, that'd be a wealth of information there for you. Warrior is good at PvP, though. Maybe some of my guides can help you get started, maybe? Could be a good resource for you. Oh, a better rear belt seat. You ready to go? Yeah, you should. The build's a little different than PVE. But nothing that would hold you back from giving it a try. They're probably succeeding, right? There you go. And yeah. And yeah. You gotta get this thing moving a couple times. One of the last time. A little bit of hip drive on that one. A little bit of bucking on the bench, too. That's okay. Getting it moving. Getting it moving. It's alright. Don't mind if we do. Oh, it's the twos. This is a fun two session right here. This one's a good one. Good old two session. Right heel. Good old twosies. Most death, most death. Killing them totems, boys. Kill them, wrestle shaman totems, healing streams, healing tides especially. Cap totems. All of that. He had free cogs when he both kicked him. I landed the kick and he kicked him right after. But it gave him free cog. It's troll, how that works. That is troll. Beautiful day outside today. Give me good energy, man. Good vibes. Good feels. Love it. Love it. Need it. Need it. Yeah, so the threat plates is the plates out and the nice damage is the font. Yep. Pretty pets, yeah. I feel ya. With threat plates, you can make the different totem nameplates have different colors, which makes it easier to identify. A little bit. And I could even edit it more. But yeah. They don't all trip as the same color that way. So they're looking like a sea of red nameplates, right? And you should also, like, hide the imps, too, right? It's called nice damage. Exclamation mark, nice damage. In the chat, we'll link it for you. Exclamation mark, nice damage. Alright. Here we go. Another round. Another round. Of five, ideally. Another round of five. Get the same movement, then we can do whatever we want. If we drop down a few more reps, who knows? Go crazy. I don't think we need to go pop. We could, but I don't think we need to. We'll see. Nice. Nice, nice. Might do some reps at 225, just for fun. I'd like for the pad. I don't think it'd go up at all. I like how my chest has been feeling good recently. We need a couple sets of five, but I'm doing a couple sets of these. I don't think we're totally toasted yet, so... These should feel good. And then I'll take the sleeves off and do some more stuff. Some more extras, I think. Uh, so filtering out like minor enemies is in the normal WoW settings. Normal WoW settings. This guy was gaming. That was a really nice opener for him. Very nice opener. Uh, very nice. Now the 225, we'll have to roll that. Nice. A little smooth. It really does. A little smooth. Set it for some fives, just for fun. Just for funsies. I might not need the almost sleeves for that, but they do feel nice. I don't know, Mervin. I don't know if I do any stream elements points. What would you use? What would you use them for? What would you be using them for? I think I saw you on the top gifter spot over there when I glanced at it the other day. Getting you some big points over there, huh? Big points. Oh, man. I often usually try to have the weight. I mean, every workout if I can. If the two weeks of the same then Grease would probably be fine, too. Every workout if I could, though. Yeah, I don't really do much with the points over here. We probably should at some point, but I have not gotten into it too much yet. You know? But yeah, what are you curious about, Mr. Mervin? What kind of prize would you be looking for? Dude, we have to do them for the points. Not so much. Not so much. That's interesting, though. That's gonna be a whole lot of giveaways. They're gonna be shelling them out here pretty soon, I bet. That's a whole lot. But anyway, you know? Time to take that all the way through. Yeah. That's funny. We'd be giving away a whole lot of prizes if that was the case, yeah. A whole lot of them. Oh, man. That's cool, though. I think we'd give away hundreds of prizes. That'd be wild. Unless there was something with light points, but yeah, I don't know. Maybe stream elements points are different than channel points. Maybe that's different, right? Probably is, though. Probably is. Alright. Feeling that. Indeed. Feeling that. How many points you got over there? And what do you get points for? Because if it's the same thing as channel points, that would be pretty crazy. Yeah. Yeah. I don't know what his setup is. Not familiar with it. Not sure about that one. Alright. I think that's enough benching for now. I've got a couple more sets and we'll chill. The bench. Muscles recuperate. Well, like I said, I don't know if stream elements does points the same way as like channel points, or just accrue based on watching. Can be sure, yeah. Don't make you miss out on any prizes, huh, Mr. Mervin? I expect that. Most definitely not. How do you take Grease or Restay? Same as always, just take it. I think we did 245. Did we only do three? I thought we did like... For some reason, I thought we did five. Am I making that up? Didn't we just do five of those, or did I only do three? Am I making that up? Pretty sure we did five. Yeah. You can just have, yeah, just have Grease anytime. Maybe that figure in the same time. There's a time of day that works. That feels good, too. Just working the mix, you know? Alright, let's do a couple more little little sets here for fun, and then we'll be on our way and get our gaming day started, huh? But yeah, Mervin, do you know what sort of things generate points? We're not gonna know how many points you get. Because I don't think it's the same thing as just Twitch channel points, right? Isn't like being subbed and gifting subs and powering up and that kind of thing? Probably. I don't know. Haven't set that up myself. I'll do a couple more pull-ups, too. Oh, man. Oh, boy. No, I just wouldn't want you to miss it out, right? That's all. If you sub to it, you get 500 channel points? And then it requires 100,000 to get a prize? Okay. Well? You know? In a couple years, you'll get yourself a prize. Hell, yeah. It's an option, I suppose? Yeah? What's the math on that? 100,000 divided by 500? Might take a bit. But we'll be here for a bit, so if you don't notice what it is. Oh, my goodness. Do I ever play and stream live? Oh, every time I see you streaming workout. Uh, I mean, I probably stream games for about, um, like eight to nine hours a day, and I usually work out for about two hours a day. But if you always tune in at this time, this is usually the time that I work out, so... But yes, the other eight to nine hours of streaming that we do is gaming, yep. But yes, the other 8 to 9 hours of streaming that we do is gaming, yep. Thanks tuning into the workout streams, though, that's fun. Glad to have you here for that. Definitely. For sure. However, yeah, most of what we do on stream is gaming. But if you're just not sort of tuned into the gaming sessions, and you always tune around this time, then yeah. You're probably gonna catch the workouts. You can always also check the past broadcast tab. If you go to videos and you check past broadcasts, you can kinda catch up on any content you may have missed, right? But all my gaming is live, as a matter of fact. So, yep. You're in the right place, dude, just maybe not quite at the exact right time if you're looking for gaming in particular. Although we are doing a little bit of gaming vod review here, aren't we? A consistent part of our day is getting the morning gains in. Yup. That's how we do it, brother. That's how we do it. Got to. Gotta get the morning gains in. So, for example, in about 20 minutes, we'll probably be done with our workout, and then we'll hop on the game. Hop on the games and see how it goes, right? Might be playing, dude. Might be playing. Maybe we'll see you there. Love that.
Hey, little man!
What am I gonna play on stream today? Maybe some WoW, maybe some POE? What do you feel like watching? What are you feeling? You won your first arena in the green gear, there you go. That chest drive's fun. Good stuff. Oh, the POE stream, say, ooh, I'd love to play more. More POE, bro. I'd love that.
I would love that. You're gonna have to twist my arm on that one.
Yep. Been subbing to Swiftie channel for 32 months, nice, so it gets like... Is my math correct that you need 200 months of sub for a prize, is that right, or am I missing something? I think that's right. Right, so... Almost there, right? 32 months out of 200 for a prize? Only 170 months to go, right? Only 15 years left until you get a prize. What's the most popular private WoW vanilla server? I have no fucking idea, why would you play private servers when you can play actual, real servers?
Why would you do that? You play real servers! Get in there. All it costs is a WoW sub. Not too bad, you can just get WoW tokens if you wanted to. Not too bad, not too bad at all.
I use Legion Pulse pre-workout. I love it. It's the best. I don't think WoW wakes you resurgence, yeah, there's usually excitement around the new patches, but WoW's pumping right now. But I think a lot of the hype is actually for hardcore classic, interestingly enough. But yeah, WoW's a game where people check out the new stuff, right? Well, Rets are really good, people are also being dramatic, yeah.
The Rets are really good, though, yeah.
But yes, I feel you.
It's making a little bit of a... They really are really good, but... Yeah. People usually are pretty dramatic, aren't they?
Hey, Lance. Bet for people dropping the game, going hardcore, expecting to be in the game, yeah, the people who do that are casuals, right? They're casuals, there's nothing wrong with that, but they're casuals. They don't play the game at a high enough level. For it to be a problem anyway, they just wanna fuss and be part of whatever's the new hype thing, and it's fine, but they're casuals. Right? It's all good. But we may have to do the classic hardcore thing at some point anyway. Just because that's the hype, but I don't know, I think we got a little more POE juice before we do that. A little more juice in the POE. Maybe, maybe? See if we can make a day out of it. Do I struggle against Rets? If you don't have a ret on your team, it can be tough, for sure. Yeah. But I mean, like, we're fighting rep pounce in 2v2 here and getting the job done, so... I don't think there's anything hype about HC, in terms of the gameplay. I'd probably just play a hunter or something, man. Probably just play a hunter.
Bow mobs down as a hunter. Play Bash Cletus. You know?
You gotta cash those out, Mervin. You gotta cash them puppies out. There you go. Do it. Cash them puppies out, get you a yacht or something. You're pumping with the points. Didn't quite nail the copy.
Mix there, rip.
Couple more reps, couple more reps. Yeah, that's annoying. I would be doing a whole tavern.
That's next, though.
No, I like... It's not necessarily the smartest thing to do, but I like seeing if we can have good days by playing variety, by playing games that I am excited about, you know? Like, I wanna see if we can get some good subs rolling on days where we play POE. See if we can get good subs rolling doing gym streams. You know, I like that. Good productivity, doing things that are just passion projects, that's fun. You know? But yeah, I mean, classic hardcore might be a pop, might be something I do at some point. We actually have a lot of cool options for our gaming play right now, you know? Got a lot of options. We gotta do arena as well. RBG's have been fun, but POE pumping is probably the name of the game right now. Do a POE start today? I might start off in WoW, just to debate people into joining the stream and then swap. Nah, we'll see if there's anything going on in WoW real quick. We'll see. We'll see, we'll see. The POE streams really haven't been doing that bad in terms of viewership, and while it's fine. Let us see the subs pumping a little harder, let us see the power-ups kicking a little harder, but you know, that's alright, it's new content, people aren't so sure about it, I get it. But just judging from the total views on those past broadcasts, people are tuning in and checking things out, so that's cool. That's cool, that's cool. Right? It's good to see that.
It's always good.
Man, oh man! But you need 96 int for what? What E does this? Watch chess. No, I love POE, I wanna play more, but we'll see, we'll see how it goes, we'll log in. Carcass Jack. I think that's a good one, right? What does that do? I think that's a good one. I think that one's okay. Yeah, what does that one do? I'm gonna just get stats. Do you wanna rank one push season? I'd like to, but... It's probably playing with Vanguard's or not doing it at all, really. I'd rather, I wanna play with him, and if he's available, then we'll queue it up, and if he's not, then no worries, you know? Yeah. We'll see. Oh yeah, that's awesome, Lance, yeah. Big AoE, that does sound fun. So yeah, I'd like to. I'd like to. But I wanna help MrGarbageXD get glad on one of his healers, cause that's my buddy right there. So I do wanna do that as well. But yeah, I mean, if we can get some threes in during the day, that'd be great, and if we can get some threes in with Vanguard's, that's the dream for the rank one push, but yeah. We'll see. You need 1400? Alright. Good options, good options. That's a lot of int, though.
Yeah.
Just get that on your gear somehow, you know? Maybe even get a weapon that has it. There are weapons that have int on them, I don't think it's very good, like on their crucible tree, but... If you need it, you know, maybe. You gotta do what you gotta do. Is that the sort of like spikes down the plate? I found a couple of those, yeah. I thought that one could be good for you, but you can't leech off crits, it looked kinda weird, but I don't know how much critting you're doing at the moment. I think I found a few of those, as a matter of fact. Any primers in the chat trying to get us to 10 subs and resubs with the gym stream? Get that day started off strong, bro. Definitely not a bad way to start the day. Not too shabby at all. Appreciate it. The Warrior Nurse tomorrow?
What Warrior Nurse?
I haven't seen him. I haven't seen no Warrior Nurse. Locknesh bringing it in, thank you so much, man, big flex for the prime, appreciate it, dude. Thank you, man, I was like, I don't see no Warrior Nurse. Whoa now, Alex, okay now, dude! Big flex for you and big flex those five and subs, man, thank you so much, dude, just like that. Pumping us up, what a great way to start the day, thank you, Alex.
You rock, dude. You rock, bro. What a great way to start the day. What a good release. What a great way to get it going, thank you, dude. Big pump! Right off the bat today, let's get after it.
My man, thank you, dude. Good looking out, brother. Very generous. Pumping us up. Yeah, we'll start off in WoW, we'll kinda see what's going on. And then I think we'll wanna explore some POE options if there's not a lot of stuff going on in WoW. You know? Man, oh man! That's at the buzzer, too, bro. That's at the buzzer. Appreciate it, man. But alright. Let's wrap up the gym stream so that we can get onto the gaming stream with some time to do stuff today. We'll eat, we'll chill, we'll walk, and then game. That'll be the plan, alright? But thank you guys for tuning in, kind of a big bump in gym stream this morning, I appreciate it. Doing our WoW PvP study. And benching back a little bit. Good start to the day, same thing tomorrow. Probably doing legs tomorrow, maybe some back end legs, actually, doing some kind of deadlifts with hex bar or otherwise. Find a competing, I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to. Have to sort of figure out when. When it all, you know, when it all fits together, right? But yeah, the rest of the day is gaming, we'll do our afternoon gaming session, then be back for the nighttime gaming session, and the afternoon gaming session, hopefully, will start not too long from right now, we'll try to make it a quick turnaround and get down to business, alright? Thanks for the strong start to the day, appreciate the love, thanks for watching, and we'll see you guys soon for the games, peace.